We're live. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, and today we are here with our Get Oiling team. Our panel here, we have Greg and Amanda Killwine and Kim Ming up in Fargo. How's it going up there, guys?
It's cold and windy. I had to chase my trash can down the street this morning.
What? Well, it wasn't happy, so.
It's like forty mile an hour gusts, and there's trash everywhere.
Oh, my God. It's insane. You guys, as you're coming in, let us know what kind of crazy weather you've got where you are. If you are, if you are in Middle Tennessee, we are sending our love to you, sending our love back home for me. Yeah, so we're happy to have you guys here today. Welcome. If this is your first time being here, we do this every week. This is an opportunity for you to get help with growing your business. This is free to anyone who is a Young Living distributor. We are Get Oiling. If you don't know about us, we are the premier comprehensive platform for you to grow your Young Living business, whether you are star or royal crown diamond. We are a way for you to get in touch and stay in touch with your people, to attract and convert prospects into your business, and to grow your brand online with ease without having to spend all of your time trying to make this thing work. So today, we're going to be talking about a really cool feature. It is a relatively new feature in the sort of grand history of Get Oiling, of the platform itself. We started out as a replicated website for Young Living distributors, and there are a few of those out there. But we have since grown over time to expand and include with every wave of Greg's magic wand, things like a contact manager, follow-up systems, and now a member area where you can host your own groups. We call these vaults. And inside of those, you can basically use them just like you would use a Facebook group, except more effectively and with more automation, which is really exciting. And one of the things that we wanted to make sure we covered today was really kind of unique to you guys who are running a business alongside your Young Living business, right? Or if you are already established as someone who is a coach, a consultant, a wellness practitioner, if you're in the healing space, if you're someone who has any desire specifically to coach, or you are currently coaching people, or to provide educational services to people and sell your expertise. We're going to talk a little bit about what that looks like today. Obviously, we are going to talk about the finer points of how you can use this just to grow your Young Living business. But we wanted to make sure to take care of you guys who are, who are running other businesses as well. Because if you didn't know this, like I mentioned just a minute ago, the Get Oiling platform began as a replicated site for Young Living distributors. Now it is personally brandable to you, to your business, whatever business you are running, whether it's just Young Living or something that is adjacent to Young Living, complimentary to Young Living. And so you can absolutely make this look and behave however you want, and, and brand yourself to the world exactly the way that you want to. So I'm going to get into a handful of slides here, and we will be doing a fair amount of screen sharing so you guys can actually see what this stuff looks like. So let's open up the slides, and where's everybody coming in from today? Do we see any, any fun coming in in the chat there? Amanda, Kim? Greg, we're going to save your voice.
Yes, we've got from Texas, ooh, sunny and cool. Alberta, we've got Ontario, we've got Florida, all over the place. Chicago, South Carolina, but it's raining.
Wisconsin, Virginia, Canada, all over the place, Idaho.
Thank you, guys, for being here today, and I'm really excited to share this stuff with you and to help you get growing in your business. So yeah, today, we're going to talk about membership sites. Membership sites, this is something that a lot of people who have brands online seek to have because it's a place for you to deliver your unique value, your perspective, in a way that is controlled and behaves in the way that you want it to. This is truly an alternative, and in, in the majority of cases, the better alternative to something like a Facebook group. There's definitely some, some upsides to Facebook groups, but there are some real downsides to using Facebook groups, especially as a Young Living distributor, especially as a network marketer. We're going to get into that here in a little bit as well. So we're going to talk to you about how you can have a membership site for your prospects, your members, your team, your clients, and how you could even develop online courses and things like that that you could give away as a, as a lead generator, or as a value add, or even as an addendum to your business, a thing that you can actually have that you sell. So first, welcome. So today, we're going to talk about membership sites for Young Living, what that looks like, what it can mean for you. We'll talk about how you can use these to grow your business, Young Living and otherwise. And we're going to point you in the direction of a free course. You can actually see this stuff in action with a course that we've built on our own membership site that looks just like you will have yours in terms of the framework. And, and we show you in that course exactly step by step how to set up your own. And it's totally free. I mean, of course, you want to like have us to be able to use it, but like you can go learn for free. Now, and we're also going to talk, like I mentioned, about how to use Get Oiling if you are a distributor with an adjacent business. If you, if you got into oils because they are complimentary to your chiropractic practice or to your massage practice, or if you are a coach or a business coach, and you see network marketing as an opportunity to get people into a better frame of mind and an additional stream of income, there's a way for you to monetize further what it is that you're doing with the structures that we offer here. Because if you didn't know this yet, what is on offer with Get Oiling as a system in its entirety is something that is sought after and paid for dearly, both in money and in time and tech and frustration by, by others in the sort of expert marketing industry. People will often pay for this kind of suite of tools upward of a thousand dollars a month before the person that you got to pay to hook stuff like this up together to make it work, and you've got it all under one roof. So let's talk about that. First, if you are here today because you need help with your business, whether it has to do with member area questions or not, go ahead and head over to the Q and A here live. Definitely, if you have questions as you watch this as a recording later on for you guys, send those questions over to support@getoiling.com. So go ahead and add your questions to the Q and A now, and we will have a special section to answer those here shortly. So first, let's talk about why you want to use a membership site for your business, specifically for Young Living. First, it is your home on the web, yours. When you're at Facebook, when you're on Facebook, you are at someone else's barbecue, and you may be able to draw a bunch of people over into the conversation you're trying to hold. But at the end of the day, you don't control how things go down. You don't control what goes where, who sees what. And when you have your own place on the web to share your information and the things that you work hard to, you know, to either pay for and, and share with your members, or, or to develop even yourself, you want to make sure that it's actually working in the way that you want it to. And the best way to do that is to have it happen on your own turf, right? So Facebook is, and this is really important for you guys to understand, I get it when you're bootstrapping and you're getting started and, you know, and, and you, you need to get your sales in before you can really see yourself investing in more tools for your business. Understand that building too far on Facebook, like the, the sort of structure and operation of your business, can get you into a hamster wheel of activity that's really hard to get off of, okay? Chase free strategies until you've got some profitability, but the, the instant that you're able to get started putting systems in place. Now, there's a couple of reasons why. To speak to the time suck that is Facebook, you have to, have to have all day long commitment to posting and commenting and responding activity, whether it's on a Facebook group or a profile, in order to keep and get people's attention. So if you have a promo that you want to share, you have a blog post that you want to share, you have something that you want to get out there, the likelihood of you being able to reach all the people that you want to reach is going to be relative to how much hustle you have put into building what's called edge rank on Facebook, which basically means the activity that you invest so that people can see what you're doing, so that Facebook thinks you're relevant, right? There are tricks to get better at this. There are tricks to kind of hack this a little bit. And if you're a part of Go For Gold, Martha is an absolute genius at, at pulling that stuff off. It's a great place for you to start, but as soon as possible. Again, you want to move over to structure because if you're working hard to build your list of followers, of members, you want to make sure that when it's time for you to say something to them, you are heard. So number one, Facebook exists to generate revenue for itself in ad dollars. You will be able to be seen by people on Facebook with a business page, for instance, if you pay Facebook to show you to your audience. Another thing that's really, really important here, and I'm sorry, you guys, I gotta get on this rant for a minute. I built my businesses and network marketing on Facebook entirely the first two times. And I'm telling you, it gets to a point, and the equivalent in Young Living would be about midway through silver, where you just go, oh, my God, I don't know if I can do this anymore. Okay, so there's that part. Here's the other really critically important part, and maybe some of you guys have dealt with this before. Facebook is hostile to network marketing. Facebook actually will mine through and look at and monitor and even remove or penalize you for content in your groups. It is not your house. When you, when you create a Facebook group, it is not your house. Look at their terms and conditions. Look at the fine print when you create a group, okay? They are policing groups for content. If it's something they don't agree with, they can take it down. If they think you're saying too much of what they don't agree with, they can take your whole group down. And this can happen in an instant, right? Just in an instant, it can be gone because you don't own it, and you have to play by their rules. They're hostile to network marketing, right? And for the kind of things that we like to talk about, and the things that a lot of us, I know, are passionate about where it comes to wellness and, and freedom and dominion over our personal selves, especially here in the U.S., like, just, just understand, you guys. It's a great place to start. It's a great place to generate leads, get people engaged. But you want to move the conversation as soon as possible over to your own turf. So you're heard, and so that you aren't being policed on what you say. Make sense? Show of hands. Who's with me on that? Love it. There you go. Good to see you, guys. All right, now, and I guess I did kind of speak to this ranting here just a second ago. A really important thing as well that, that's factored into having your own membership site to communicate with anyone that would be a part of your organization or a part of your following, is that you can build automations into this process, right? When you have a membership site, you can have a series of emails or texts that drip out to people that welcome them, or that on a daily basis, point them back to a new lesson that they need to go check out, right? And you can do this kind of thing where you can educate on an automated basis. How many of you guys who have a, you know, a reasonably sized member base, not talking about builders here specifically, how many of you would you say you spend more than fifty percent of the time in your business on education? On educating your members, or your builders even, right? Now, we know, and we can all agree, that educating your members is not actually an income-producing activity, right? It can be an income-sustaining activity, but it is not an actual IPA. IPAs are the things that bring people in, right? The things that bring people in and get them onto essential awards. Now, you educating typically means you posting something new every day, posting something new every month, holding the same class over and over again, right? If, if you're still doing classes in local markets. What you can do inside of your own membership site, and if you were to use like the online courses feature that we have with Get Oiling, is the things that you typically do over and over and say over and over and over again, you can have dripped out automatically for people as they're getting started. No more having people overwhelmed because you plop them into three groups, and they're like, whoa, how am I going to take in all of this information? You can literally handhold them through automation when you use this process and keep them inside of an area where it is your group, your team, your members, your, your brand, and what you want to share with the world. And then, of course, you can guarantee that what you see is seen to the best degree that you can when you have their contact information, not a member in your group on Facebook, but their email address, their phone number. So you can shoot out an email, shoot out a text, and let them know there is something there for them to see. That is going to be the most effective way for you to, you know, to get out of that cycle of managing and educating your business and back into the flow of things that actually move the needle. All right, and rant. So let's talk about some ways to use your member area. First, of course, for prospects. Now, this is one caveat here. I do think that, that groups on Facebook can be really well, well-used for warming up prospects, right? So for people who are not in the fold, who are not in Young Living, they're not your members yet, they're not a part of, of this community, they don't know the lingo, this is actually, Facebook's a great place to warm those people up. Some, some of you guys are like, nope, I don't even want that, and I totally respect that. You can put your prospects into a member area and drip that information out, provide all of that kind of automation that you would want to have in place to educate prospects, for instance, to, you know, to move them toward, you know, with the education that they need in order to get a yes. Of course, one of the best ways that you can use your member area is for actually educating your Young Living members. This is where you can have what we call a vault, where you have a trove of information that you have surely collected yourself, and you never have to worry about trying to dig it up and post something over and over and over again, hoping that people will see it in a Facebook group. You can literally put it into modules and make people go one at a time for each, each piece of information. How much more effective would it be for you to get your people introduced to their kit, right? Or, or just to Young Living generally, if you had that in a step-by-step sort of module format, and you could use other people's material for this, you guys. We actually have training that shows you how to use Sways from Grow Workspace inside of your lessons, and we'll show you what that looks like today. This is probably the most time-saving and thus potentially money-making effort you can, you can go through in your business, is to get your member area into some automation, specifically serving your members. And then, of course, your team, to have your own special spot where you teach what you know works, where you compile resources, where you can organize and say, this is, you know, this is the chat room where we talk about compliance, or this is the one where we talk about mindset. There's no more having to like just scroll through endlessly and deal with the distraction of Facebook for your team. You can keep everybody inside of a happy little home that you, again, have control over so that you know that people are hearing what you're saying, seeing what you're sharing. And then finally, really powerful stuff, you guys. If you are an expert in something and you want to create a course that you can sell, that's something you can do through our platform. If you are a coach and you have a program that you offer, you can run group coaching inside of our platform. If you are an AFT practitioner, you can run your entire business, your AFT business, inside our platform, right? Are you seeing how this is going? If you are a massage therapist, you can use this platform. And so long as you are branding yourself, right? And, and you're following the steps to, you know, to customize the, the way that you're showing up, the front page of your site, and providing the different lanes of your business, the, the direction that they need to land where they need to, then you're able to really accomplish a lot with this one incredible tool. So, so we're going to talk about what that looks like today, also showing you how you can use these same features. I mean, if you're here today, it may just be that you're just super passionate about these oils. It changed your life. These companies changed your life, and you just want to find a better way to optimize the, the work that you're doing, maybe not work as much and enjoy the fruits of your labor a little more. That's obviously something that we're here to help you do as well. So I mentioned a free course. This is something that is going to show you A to Z how to set up and use your member area. Specifically, if you want to set up your member area for prospects, members, and team, and using the different features that, that we would recommend in those instances. Now, on today's training, we are going to go a little bit more in-depth, and we do have some more in-depth training that's inside of this right here. This link, getoiling.com/membertraining. You're going to see that there are a couple of, of coaching videos in there as well where we kind of get into more of the intricacies of things that you can do, and we are going to get into some of those today. So, um, let's see, I have this a copy from, and another, another slide that I wasn't supposed to keep there. So yeah, let's, um, let's move into Q and A here and, and actually start, you know, showing off some of this stuff. We had some questions that, that, that sort of created the topic today. I don't know, Greg, if you have those, or Yvonne, if you're here and you want to come out.
She is here. I see her in the list.
All right, Yvonne.
Was our inspiration.
I'm going to lower hands real quick. Yvonne, if you would like to come out and join us, maybe let us know in the chat. And, and we can talk about that for sure, because I know some of your questions, it sort of led to this today. Okay, she says yes. I'm gonna... Let me see if I can find you. All right. If you could unmute yourself, we'd love to hear from you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I am very interested in learning how to use this with my health coaching program. And then also using it to, as incentives for people to join the program. So I'm very interested in being here.
Awesome. So do you have, for your, your health coaching program, do you have sort of like a set series of, of sort of steps that you go through with clients?
Yeah, and that's the thing, is try to figure out what, what way to set it up, whether, you know, to use. Because you can only use so many classes, right? And so the main information I am gathering would be on a class, maybe, and then some of the other information just on pages with links and stuff. I have a lot of videos on, well, I'll probably eventually put them on YouTube, but right now, they're all on Vimeo. And so trying to figure out how the best way to link all that, that, so that it's the most user-friendly, right?
Yeah, yeah. So just, just from a high-concept level, before we, you know, even get into like the showing you of where you point and click. When, when you've got a program, a coaching program, or, or really any kind of series of steps that you would normally lead someone through in order to get a result, you can courseify that, if you will, with, with the, the lessons, the, the class feature inside of Get Oiling. So what you would do is, and, and sometimes you need to go back to the drawing board for this just to make sure that you have all of the resources that you really need. But, but what I always recommend is, is to kind of imagine, like, if you were able to kind of, I don't know, clone yourself or robot yourself so that, that someone could be led through the process without you. The really dynamic thing that happens there is that you're not repeating the teaching with every client, but they are learning a concept, and then the time that you're spending with them, one-on-one, if you're doing that, is specifically on implementation and growth. So I also find that to be a lot more effective than just, you know, doing the more traditional, well, let's get on a call thing, right? So, so what you would do then is you would define what those steps are. You'd, you would record a video, PowerPoint or no, with it, and then you would upload each one to a lesson inside of Get Oiling. You would obviously use any supplemental information that you would want to include, any downloads. If you require homework for accountability, you'd put that kind of thing in place. And then, and then, yeah, like you, it's, it's something that'll grow with you over time, of course. When you're, when you're new to kind of courseifying your information, you'll, you'll quickly recognize, you'll get a lot of the same questions over and over again, and that'll kind of inform where you need to go and provide supplemental information in the process. And then, you know, once you've got that done, it's just a matter of, you know, when you sign on a new client, you are having them actually pay you through your Get Oiling vault. So the, the paywall and where they sign up for your program would be with the vault itself. And then, once they have paid, they would start getting that instant drip of information based on how you've designed the whole thing to play out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, and, and like I have different modules, and, and like I said, there's, there's downloads to go with each module because sometimes I give people a challenge for that week or whatever. But then there's also just a pile of extra information that they need access to right away, I think. Right? So because everybody learns at different paces, and some people are really keen, and they're going to want to learn all that, and that's okay. They could do that at any time. And some of the recipes, of course, like people need access, you might as well just give them access to all that at the beginning, and they can pick and choose what's most important to them.
Yeah.
Right? So it's just trying to figure out how, how to, like, I've been playing with the, the gallery, the photo gallery page, and I, I see that I can put an image and then link, you know, to the videos from there. Just not as easy to give them information. But can you link it like to the blog post? So if I make a blog post, say, for example, on how to make nut milk, right? And that's okay to give that to everybody because, well, what the heck, like, it's just, you know, no big deal, right?
Yeah.
So then, if I made a blog post to that, and then within the group, so that it makes it easier for them to find it, can I put that on like one of the gallery pages, for example, with a picture of nut milk or whatever?
Oh, yeah.
And then link it to my blog post, so then they get all the information there. But I don't have to reuse, you know, I'm just, I'm using the same information for multiple purposes.
That's right. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. If you've got, if you've got a public-facing page, like a blog post, and you want to link that content elsewhere, you just grab the link from that page. It's anywhere in Get Oiling that you want to see or use or share a link. It's typically going to say View, and whatever the View link is, whatever the address is that View goes to, is going to be the one that you would just want to hyperlink in, you know, the description or on the photo or wherever you're using it. And of course, where you would be providing that supplemental information would be on a custom page, or, you know, just like a, a regular page inside of Get Oiling. You may see this as, I think in a lot of ours, we have like a Start Here page that kind of talks about the expectations of, of the course. Here's what you do next. Make sure you do this, and then do that, and so on. So if, if it involves getting in touch with you, or filling out a form with you, or introducing themselves in a chat for accountability, or whatever it might be. And, and you can, you can switch the order of, of, of things as they appear in the vault as well. And I guess this is kind of a good, good time to ask Greg to please share so we can show you what that looks like. We should also talk as well about the, you know, what it takes for you to require payment for, for your course, for, or for your program in this instance. And that's actually at the vault settings level. And, and it's pretty simple to set up. You are actually able to set up a Stripe, well, you've set up your Stripe account, obviously, on, on its own, if you don't have one already. And then you can connect that directly to the vault in Get Oiling.
Awesome. I will share it out here. I have a touch of a cold, so my throat is a little scratchy today, so hopefully it sounds okay. Yeah, we can, I guess, start with kind of generally where this is at. And I do actually have a test account that's got like a, a test Stripe account set up on it, so I can show you what that process looks like to connect your Stripe account. But generally, the, the member area is under here in the My Site menu. There's this member area link, which then takes you over to another page that has basically everything that you can put in the member area, whether it's configuring the general settings for it, or setting up the vaults or online classes. So the way, the way it works is that you can have one or more online classes set up based on your plan. I think, you know, basic, I think, is one, and, and the safer vaults, I think, and then premium goes up to five, I think. But you can put that class into more than one vault if you want to. So, you know, a good example might be if you are setting this up, and this is, you know, more on the, kind of the Young Living side, like if you, if you have a vault, or sorry, yeah, if you have a class that is, for example, like the EO 101 for, that might be a good one to put in a prospects vault and a new members vault, or members vault in general. So you could put that class into both. But once you, so you got to set up the classes in the vaults kind of separately, and then you add the classes to the vault. So dive in here quick with member area settings. It's pretty simple. Give it a name. You can make some choices here and personalize it if you want to, cover photos and what have you. And I'll show you what this all looks like in a minute. There's all sorts of settings here. We go through a lot of this in that member training video, or that member training link that I, we had posted earlier, thegetoiling.com/membertraining. So, you know, feel free to drop any questions along the way, but that one goes really into depth. So the, the vault setup, this is where you'd set up your, the vaults. And so the, the vault is where, if you're going to be taking payments on this, this is where you'd set up that payment. Excuse me. So you can, within the member area, you know, some vaults can be free, some can be paid. It's kind of up to you. And if you want to, I'll show you how to, you know, connect your Stripe account. I have a test account over here in another tab. It's under My Account Settings. And then there's, if you scroll down a little bit, there's a payment processing button. And this is, it's already connected here, but if you don't already have that, you'll just have this button that says Connect. And you can connect multiple accounts if you happen to have them. You know, if you've got multiple businesses or whatever, each vault can be, go to a different bank account. But once you hit Connect, it's going to walk you through logging in, and then you'll end up with it here. And so it'll show, you know, I've connected two different Stripe accounts here. So then when I go back, let me go back to the... The member area settings. And the vaults, so, so yeah, like, so the vault that would be, you know, I actually touched on that. But like, so here's one that has payments on it, and I'll show you what this looks like. So when you're when you're setting up the vault name or the vault, you know, you give it a name. There's some options here about letting other people see it or not. Summary, this is where you add the content. So you can click add content and then you can add pages, discussion rooms or classes here. And then if you do that, it'll pop up and show you the classes that you haven't added yet. And then you can edit, you can rearrange the content just by dragging it around, for example. So, yeah, more branding here, cover photo, main photo and all that, and kind of an about. And what this looks like, so. Well, I'll show you, actually, I'll just show you the payment setup first and then I'll show you the actual vault here. So under the payment setup tab, this is where you're going to require payment to access this vault here. And so what you do is normally this, the first time you come in here, this box is not checked. So once you check that box, it's going to slide it down. And then there's some settings here that I'll explain in a minute. But then you choose the payment processor, give it a product name, whatever it might be. If it's the name of your coaching program, or maybe it's, I don't know, some downloadable guide or or what have you. And then you can choose your pricing plans. You can basically add what you want to, and there's all sorts of options here. Like if you want to, you can make. You can make it a payment plan, like, oh, there's, there's one payment to get in, or maybe it's six payments. And you can offer actually multiple payment plans. So if you wanted to have like a full pay option and then a six pay option, you could totally do that. Somebody asked what Stripe is, that's a really good, really good question, that kind of fundamental for all of this. Stripe is a payment processing service, if you go to Stripe.com. It's kind of like, I guess PayPal, except they're a little friendlier to what we're doing here.
Yeah, that's that's an important thing to note, you guys. Just like literally, because we are associated with a network marketing company. You can get slapped by PayPal and get your account shut down if you try to sell something, even if you're not selling something network marketing with PayPal. So that's another one that's hostile to this industry. We definitely recommend you use Stripe.
Yeah, so what you have to do before you go connect it, like I just showed you, go to Stripe.com, you can set up your account there. I think there's like a created account, it's free. I believe they only charge payment processing fees. So if you don't make any charges, I don't believe there's any ongoing charges. So it's totally free to set it up. You have to have like a business bank account and a couple of other steps or a couple of other things. But so anyway, so once you have, when you're adding your your payments, you know, like I said, you can have either like a payment plan. Or you can have a recurring payment that optionally has a one time fee. So you could have like, make it into a membership site, like, okay, this is going to be, I don't know, $10 a month, $50 a month. Whatever you want to for the ongoing fee, but you could, you know, if it's like, you know, a coaching program or something, you could front load it with a fee, you know. So it's like, it's going to be, you know, $500 and then $10 a month or whatever, you know, whatever your pricing structure is, you can totally do that in here. And once you, I'll just add a sample one, sample plan. Make it $10 a month with an initial fee of $25, I don't know. You can actually add a coupon code, so this is, that's interesting. I'll show you that here a little bit, but as you can see, I added the sample plan and then it shows you exactly what the payment plan will be. And this is basically what people are going to see when there's. When they're logging in and trying to sign up for your account or, you know, trying to purchase this, so. And the coupon code is, what that does is if you put in a coupon code, it actually does not show that plan in the list. But you can add that, if somebody goes in there and you have a coupon code, it'll show a coupon code field, they can type it in. And then then that new plan shows up, which is kind of cool. So then you can have, if you want to, you can run coupon codes. And then there's also this checkout page message and you can send them somewhere if, once they've purchased. Otherwise, if you don't, excuse me, if you don't have this filled out, what it does, it takes them right to the vault. But you can use this for like the so called one time offer or, you know, the by trying to get them in another vault, sending them off to another vault page. And then if they visit the page simply when not purchased, you can put them on this pre-purchased campaign, which is really cool. Because then it'll drip on them like, hey, didn't you want to actually check out and buy this awesome thing that I've got here? So so that's what that is now, let me come back up on the top here. This is a, this is an interesting setting here, this vault checkout page making that available. So what this basically does is if you have, if you have it set to only those, excuse me, with permission. They have to have a member area account already. So they would have to go through the process of signing up for your member account to get in. If you have this, anyone with the link, and then it gives you the link here and you can just copy it. Then what that does is you don't have to have a member area account to get in. And so this is really good, if you know, if you're just, if you have a sales page that goes right to a vault page where, you know, the checkout. This would be the link, you know, turn that on and then you can copy this, like they do not need an account in your member area to get in. It'll ask them at that point if they're not logged in to create an account, which is nice. So that's like all in one, you know, goes through the payment process. And then if it's, if it's approved, then they get into the vault or to whatever post purchase link that you put down there too. So that's, I guess that's the payment, I know somebody had a question about that. So that I think, and these are one, one little quirk of, I guess, Stripe is. Plans can't be deleted unless, once they've been saved. So you do just have to deactivate them if you've got some older pricing plan that you want to do away with, just uncheck the active box. And then it'll go away, even though it has to be there for some reason that Stripe allows. So, so yeah, that's that's payments.
There is a question about or relating to Paula, you mentioned, and we just showed you how to set up the payment and the payment page. But she wants to offer it free to some and paid for others. There's basically two ways you can do that, right? One, one would be to offer a coupon code in the same amount, right, as is whatever you would have charged. But the better way to protect the integrity of what you're doing and actually control who gets it for free. Is they need to be a contact in your contact manager. And then you can actually add them and then there's an option here, Greg's going to show you how to do it. You can add people for free. So like if you have something that is maybe an information product that you're selling to other young living members, right? You can provide vault access for free, maybe for your members and for your non-members, you know, they can, they can pay for it. Does that make sense? So, yeah, you you click that button there to provide vault access for free to the contact or contacts that you want to add for free.
Right, if you don't check that box, then they'll get access to the sales page essentially of the vault, which is the, if I go back here a couple of screens. Whoops, I guess I gotta go over to the payment setup tab. That's what this checkout page message is. I wonder, I'm probably logged in here, so I'm not sure that this, not sure that this will work the way that I will. Because I think it'll probably take me, yeah, it's taking me right there and I have to log out and switch windows here, but.
You know, if you want to go to Martha's, if you're logged out of Martha's vault, we could show them what the sales page looks like for Go For Gold. You know, we've shared with you guys, that's, that's a course that teaches how to use a lot of the stuff in our platform and.
Yeah, let me see here, I'm just logging out there.
While you're doing that, Vicky's asking, can I link my Ula Life Coaching to my site? Yes, yes, absolutely. If you're doing any kind of coaching, this entire platform, like you, you can run your whole coaching business on this platform.
Yeah, so here's what a sample checkout page looks like, you know, customize it with the branding. This is the title of the vault and then this vault checkout field, where is that at here? Or sorry, the checkout page message right here is this. And of course, you can put images in there, you can put a video in there, all sorts of possibilities for customizing that. As you can see here, like, since I am logged out, they can create their account automatically when they make a payment. So you can see that here, if they have a coupon code, they can apply it, put in their payment info, purchase. And then I think, I think this one might be set up to go to like a kind of a one time offer. I won't step through it here, but then, you know, there's like another vault they can purchase access to for a one time special price. Yeah, and then they're in the vault, so it's totally awesome. You can, you know, upsell them to a couple of different options if you want to, or just let them in the one vault or put them in free, so if you want to.
Vicky says, use my site as a membership site for my coaching clients. Yes, yes, your your membership site for your coaching clients would be one of your vaults inside of Get Oiling. So you can kind of look at and you guys definitely make sure, if you haven't done this yet, GetOiling.com/membertraining. We'll walk you through all of the basics. We are kind of going a little, a little wonky here today in with the details. But your member area is sort of an umbrella. And then your your vaults are sort of the equivalent of like what Facebook groups would be for you. So you can have groups that are viewable by some and not by others. You can have groups that are viewable and joinable by anyone if you wanted. Or you could have groups that are totally secret to anyone who doesn't have a link to it. So you you have that whole spectrum there. So even if you wanted to maybe have an open member area for your members, but keep, you know, whatever vault. That you've created for coaching clients wholly separate. Or if you want nothing to be visible, right? If you want to brand them separately, then you could do that as well. So, oh, yeah, this is, this is a great breakdown that Greg did. Yeah, your member area is the big house and these are the rooms, right?
Yep, yeah, and you can, this shows like you said, the member area, that's like, every one of your contacts can have one login. Basically an email and a email address and a password. And then based on whatever vault that you want them to have access to, you can control that or maybe charge payments or whatever. But then within each of those vaults, you can have one or more pages, one or more discussion rooms, one or more online classes for that. So that's kind of the structure, visual breakdown of how that works. You know, one big member area with vaults in there and then you put content in the vault and the payments happen at the vault level, so.
Yeah, so you can set that up for whatever business you have or want. Are we able to show just what Jane's member area looks like so we can give an example?
Yeah, so here is, this is a demo account that we have that we set up, Holistic Mama's Highway here with Jane. And so she said, you know, this is her main member area page and within, so just, excuse me, this, let me try to cock it up here. The, there's four vaults within this member area. And so it's one of those that's separate, of course. If I go to a holistic home, I think that has most, most content here. So now I'm within a specific vault. And if they had an account, but this was a paid vault, they would see that checkout screen like I was showing you over here, they would see something like that. Otherwise, once they're in, you can see like the type of content, like a little, little hat is the class. And then you've got pages here and then a discussion room. And I can show you what each of those looks like. The page is the simplest, so I'll show you that is basically, oh, and here we have a sway in there, which is really, really awesome. So you can embed a sway, I think we did a whole training on this at one point. On our YouTube channel, we have like how you can do this, it's pretty simple, there's a few little clicks and you can get your sway in here.
And we actually show you how this, how this whole member area and vault was set up in GetOiling.com/membertraining. So you can see how this was made.
Yes, totally, so. Yeah, Angela had asked, is there a site down up as an example, just to help us anywhere? And actually, that member training vault is a vault. So you can, if you go into that training, it's going to give you access to a vault. And you can kind of poke around and see what it looks like for yourself there. So, so next up, I'll look at the classes here. So here's a class with, looks like only one lesson, but if you had multiple lessons, they would show up down here. Within here, you know, they can click on the class or start class button. You can actually change that, like if I go to the, let me, let me do a class setup and I'll show you, there's a few different options here. Actually, I think it's this one here. But you can choose, like, how do students advance to the next lesson? Do you make them require that they complete the lessons in order or kind of what we call the time unlock? After two days or whatever, it unlocks each lesson, or you can just have it wide open so they can jump around. This one only has one class in it or one lesson in it, so. And you can have unlimited lessons within a class, which is nice. This one has another sway and, yeah, so anyway, that's, whoops, okay, yeah. But the class and they can be, that one didn't happen to have it down here, but you can turn on comments underneath too. So it's a nice setting for engaging and there's actually a way, even if I go click on one of these lessons. There is a way to, where is that at? There's the downloads video link, what am I looking for here? Oh, yeah, allow discussion on this lesson. And since I'm actually logged into her account, I hit save and see what it does over here. I'll change it back here because I know we want to keep this thing pristine. But now you can see there's a discussion down here and you can actually change this header if you want to to, you know, like, what did you find most useful about this lesson? Or what are your top three takeaways, that sort of thing? So really to drive the discussion to make it more focused than just sort of like, what do you think? So a good way of doing that, so let me turn that off here quick before we. Set at, oh, yeah, I think I got to click on it again here. It saved and went away, but yeah. So next up, going back to here. Here's the discussion room, so this is like what, it's like a version of Facebook groups on your website, but without all, all the distractions. So there's just, this one just has one post in there. But, you know, you can comment, you can tag people, you can attach photos to comments, you can make posts. As an admin, you can actually schedule a post in the future, so it'll go out at next week or tomorrow or whatever, if you want to. Or if you pre-plan these posts, you can schedule them all about. And I think there's a page where you can go see all your future scheduled posts. I believe that's this link here that takes you over there and you can see all the posts that are scheduled. But yeah, so that's a discussion room, it's pretty, pretty rich. You know, it's basically, basically got the parts of Facebook group that are, I think, helpful, but without all the distractions. And then it's on your website so that, you know, people are in there, so. Yeah, so that's, that's what the inside of the vault looks like. And let me, I'll just pop over here to another vault, like this holistic abundance. You can see that's got different things in there, it's got two discussion rooms and a class. Instead of, you know, there's no pages in this one, this one has two lessons. So, you know, so here's got a little bit more in there with this wonderful girl photo. But you can see, you know, this is a little bit richer content than that other. So, yeah. Think that's, trying to think if there's anything else, any questions coming in so far?
Setup, one, I think from where you are right now, I will know, maybe not. So at the member, the vault level rather. How do you set it up in a way that that they are semi-private? So this is Diane's question, so I would give everything to my own team, but I may want to control the select, to select or charge or allow in free by the admin. So that's going to be at the vault level setup for individual vaults, Diane. If you want it, if you want it to be something that you charge for, you need to set it up as a paid vault. And then you would just need to manually add contacts and bypass payment like we showed you.
And you can do that in bulk, so if you have a team, you can do that through the contact manager instead of, so like maybe you go, I guess, Jane, maybe a pop up over here where there's more. Where my account contact is and I've got several versions of me. So you could like actions, do this bulk add campaign. And then down here, you can add people to a vault and if it's a payment vault, then you get this little box. So you can do it in bulk, you don't have to do it one at one, one by one, if you've got a big team, you can just let them all in for free. And then set up a paywall, I guess, for anyone else.
Diane also asked if we go back to the member area settings, she's asking, she started making a member area. But she doesn't remember how to find it. That button right there that you see that says view member area, that's going to be the link to where you can actually see it. Or where, you know, what your people would see. And this is what it would look like.
Yep.
If you have stuff in it, that is.
If you don't, there's a message.
What's that?
I said, if you don't, then there's a message.
Yvonne asks, if you have the class available in more than one vault, will the comments be accessible to them all?
Great question, no, they're all kind of sandboxed, they're all independent of each other. So you can, when you add that class to one, the comments on that one are private to that vault.
And if you wanted to, say, for instance, and this is kind of getting a little more granular with business strategy for a coach. If you wanted to offer your program as more of a course, you can choose to disable the comments. And use that course in one vault. And then if you're doing group coaching with that same content in another vault, you can enable the discussion. You know, maybe at that higher, higher price point. Jen asked, if you have basic, the basic plan with Get Oiling, which limits you to one vault. Is there a way to have a general team chat area like a Facebook group and still have separate vaults to hold challenges from time to time? No, but there's a way for you to use your vault for that purpose. You would be hosting the challenge in the same vault as as your group. Because there's nothing that exists in the member area that's not a vault. It has to be inside of a vault for it to exist. So what I would do there is have, maybe take advantage of having multiple chats. Multiple, multiple discussion rooms inside of that one vault for your members. And then when you are going to do your, your challenge, which if you're using, if you're doing like the 28 day challenge that we taught with Martha Creachey's Go For Gold. You would use that campaign and apply it just to the people who are participating. And then just keep your accountability in a separate discussion room. But, yeah, you can, you can definitely use the one vault for both purposes while you're still at that level. All right, okay, this, this is an anonymous question from a little bit ago. So I made a specialty group in my Get Oiling site, but can't get anyone to go to my website to join it. It's a topic so many people ask for and I gave incentives to come, prizes, et cetera, but none of my members will go there. They say it's too complicated to go somewhere else besides where they already are on Facebook. How do we get people to want to go to our website? I've sent them individual invitations. I've sent them individual invitations to get into the member group, but they won't come. Hello, coaching moment for you. Okay. So first you decide what you want to do for your business, based on what you want to do for your business. And then you move boldly toward that decision. And part of that means informing the people that you're serving, that the way that you will continue serving them moving forward is shifting. And here's how they can continue to get that information from you, right? There is absolutely nothing wrong with you making that decision for your business. If you believe that having your own member area is a more effective way to educate people and keep in touch, you make that call. And you know what? At the end of the day, when it comes to, to growing this business, you have to operate from an abundance mindset. Not everybody is going to want to do the things that you would love for them to do. And that's okay. Because you are out here to find more people to spread the joy of oils with, right? So there are going to be people who don't listen. There are going to be people who complain. There are going to be people who make you wonder why you ever made that sale. And it's okay. You're out to find more people. You're out to find more people who are ready to take steps and follow the steps that you show them in order to see an improvement in their lives. And if they're not motivated, that's okay. Next, next. So, um, yeah, they, they, they may not show up, but what you want to make sure you're not doing is catering to, you know, some laziness, right? That, that's what this sounds like by giving them not what you want, but what they demand of you. They aren't your mom and they're not really paying your check, right? Like they're, you know, the, the individuals who are lazy. Um, you know, sure, they order. But I mean, if they won't come get information from you in a member area, they're probably not super motivated to do other things either. So let's just go build a member area that we want people in and then fill it with those people that we want. That is my advice. Don't focus on what's not happening. Focus on making the thing happen that you want. All right, Paula, if a change, if you change a current vault to paid, will the people already in there stay in the vault free?
That is a great question. There is actually, I don't know that I'll be able to demo it here, but when you basically, well, I can demo part of it. When you're in a vault and I'll find a paid vault, I just won't save it here. But when you come in here under payment setup and you do check the box, it will, then when you save it, it's going to pop up a little box that says, would you like to add the existing people in for free? Or would you like to keep them, make them pay? So you do have an option there. And then if you miss that opportunity, you can always go in and bulk add them to the, to the, to the vault.
Awesome. There is a question here and I know Greg, you, you typed the answer. But for those of you who are seeing this and you're asking yourself, what on earth am I going to do with that? How like, I don't have time to make a thing, do a thing, whatever. Go to get oiling.com forward slash member training. We're showing you in that training, how to fill your member area with content that you can get from others who are really good at making content. That sway that you saw is from one of our partners, Grow Workspace. We work with a number of content providers in the Young Living distributor space, whether that's for your text campaigns, email campaigns, newsletters, sways, classes, educational materials, graphics, all of that. And actually, if you go to our page, get oiling.com, you can see the growing list of partners that we're working with. And yeah, he will show you right here. Um, yeah, we've got Go For Gold with Martha Creachy. This isn't just content. This is an entire course. And inside of that course, you actually get access to content. It's like I've written in a lot of cases or that Martha's written for you. Grow Workspace's fabulous, modern companion. And we've got new, we've got new content providers joining us regularly. So you're able to outsource that part of your business if you're not a photographer or a writer or whatever. For sure. Another thing as well, for those of you guys, you know, who are really interested in, in pursuing automation, we have a 28 day challenge. That's a bonus with Go For Gold with Martha Creachy. If you don't have that yet, I would encourage you to go to get oiling.com forward slash Go For Gold so that you can get access to that course. There's, again, attached to that course is a 28 day challenge where we actually take all of the components of a, an automated, mostly automated 28 day challenge for you to use for your members. And, and, and just like, just click, click, plug it into your Get Oiling system. And all you have to do is just go and change some words in a few places. Like we've got like the downloads and everything for you. So get oiling.com forward slash Go For Gold. Not only is that really great training that shows you how she went gold in six months in 2019, but it also shows you step by step where to click, what to do, what to use. And we even give you done for you templates to use to set your Get Oiling system up in that context. All right. Ursula says, can I choose an email that recipient will see when I send a campaign? So far it comes from campaigns@oileemail.com. There's ultimately, it's going to be from the email address that you put into our system, right?
Yeah. And if you, I mean, there is a way, if you have a custom email address or sorry, a custom domain, that's not a free account. It's not a Gmail. It's not a Yahoo. It's not, you know, one of those free ones. There is a way you can set that up, but it does require that you have your own email address on your own domain. So that that name, that email address isn't involved at all, even though it is technically from, I think it's from your email address, but this is the sender. So some email programs show it differently than others.
Yeah. So, and this, and this is kind of a point on branding yourself. You can have your, oh, so you do have that. Okay, cool. So yourname@yourname.com, super recommend using that. Or just, you know, yourname.com being your address, your URL, we can help you get that set up. If you don't have it set up already in your Get Oiling system, we could also help you set up your own email. And, and this, this also, I mean, doesn't, this kind of affords you the ability to like have email go out more quickly as well. If you've got a big list of people, if you've got your own, you know, yourname@yourname.com or info@yourname.com or however you want to set that up. So, um, yeah, Ursula, because you don't have a custom email address created, I think Greg, like she's, she's talking about how it's coming through that.
Yeah, it's an extra setup step. So that's something, if you just email support@getoiling.com, we can help you out there. Look at your situation.
Awesome. All right. Do you guys have any more questions? Yvonne, you're still here and able to chat. If you've got any follow-up questions on how to kind of set this up for, for your coaching. Happy to go over those with you while we're still here.
Well, I think I didn't realize the, oh, the course. So I'll go through that first. And then if I have more questions, then I'll send, send you guys an email. But this helps a lot. Just kind of seeing how other people have sort of set it up, just because, you know, time's worth money, right? And I don't want to have to do it twice, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. If you've got stuff that you could already use, even better. But when you, when you set up a coaching program with kind of video modules, if you will, it really does allow you to serve more clients and even at a, at a higher level, because you're spending more of your time with them on, on the actual action steps they need to take and, and on their cognition as opposed to, you know, just you having to teach over and over again. So I really, I'm excited to hear what you put together with this. Let's see, Ursula asks, can I sell products, books or only coaching program? If you're selling digital products, it'll work beautifully with us. If you're selling subscription models, that is something that will work beautifully with us. If you're selling a physical product, there is a way to do it. But we aren't really set up for it, you know, like a, like a Shopify or, you know, Squarespace is for like physical products.
Yeah, I think the, and there's a, I learned about, I think it's the Square Store. If you search for Square Store on Google, they actually have like a free e-commerce platform that you can sell. And they handle all, I think, all the complicated stuff, the shipping, the tax, all that good stuff that goes with physical products.
We do have, we do have some members of our platform that do sell like workbook, like physical product stuff. And it's, it's a little more complicated than it would be if, you know, if you were using a platform that's actually set up to, to sell physical products. So, so yeah, I hope that helps. There's, there's technically a way to get it done, but, but we're really here to help you get more of, you know, more, more leverage into your business. And so we're very digital focused.
And the one thing that we have even done with some people is, is that if you create a page, then, and you do have a Shopify or whatever, you can link directly from your website to those products as well. If you, so you can still have all the products on your website. You would just create a custom page and you can put as many images on there as you want to. And then you can link directly to each product on your sales page that you have. Or you can, you know, link individually, or you can just link directly just to that Shopify page. Hope that helps too.
Yeah, yeah. And if, and if you have like, if it's, if it's one thing, right? If you're, if you sell one physical thing, that's a pretty easy thing to set up with us. But if you need like a shopping cart, that's, that's not going to be a thing you want to do with us. Awesome. Great questions today, you guys. All right. Any, any more before we get going? We've, we've been quite concise here today. I'm, I'm impressed.
Ashley, could you, could you link to a, because you can do something like that, sort of like through Amazon, right? Where you have featured items on Amazon that you recommend? Can you just make a page and then link it to Amazon?
Absolutely. Yep. Sure can. Highly recommend it, especially if you're an Amazon affiliate. You can include Amazon affiliate links all over your Good Oiling site and your emails and your blog posts. Make that money. Yes, absolutely. Cool, cool. All right. Well, thanks again, you guys. And if you have anything that you would like to work on with us, you know, no, no question is too big or small, so long as it, you know, pertains to you growing your, your Young Living business. We're here to help you. Send us an email, support@getoiling.com. Let us know that you'd like to work with us on an upcoming weekly work session. In upcoming weeks, we're going to be showing you guys some of the amazing things that our members are doing with, with their websites, with Get Oiling. And, and introduce you to some new content providers as well to help save you more time and help you get more done in your business. So in the meantime, for those of you who watch this as a replay, make sure you're subscribed to get oiling.com forward slash weekly work sessions so that you can join these live calls and be in touch with us about those. And again, guys, thanks for coming and we will see you same time next week.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Yvonne, for coming on live.
Yes, thank you. Have a great rest of your week.